Monday, September 15, 2025, meeting of the Louisiana County Board of Supervisors to order.
We convene in closed session pursuant to the following subsections of Virginia Code We convene in closed session pursuant to the following subsections of Virginia Code 2.2-3711. Number one, in accordance with 2.2-3711a3, discussion and consideration of acquisition 2.2-3711. Number one, in accordance with 2.2-3711a3, discussion and consideration of acquisition of real property for public purposes or for disposition of public property of real property for public purposes or for disposition of public property held real held real property, publicly held real property in the Kukui District where discussion in property, publicly held real property in the Kukui District where discussion in open open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the of the public body in accordance with 2.2-3711a8, consultation with legal counsel employed public body in accordance with 2.2-3711a8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. legal advice by such counsel. Sir. Sir.
Being properly moved to say that we go into closed session and discussion. All Being properly moved to say that we go into closed session and discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for closed session. Any opposed? Motion passes for closed session.
There a second?
Second.
I've been promptly moved in second that we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. I will now poll members to certify that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened, were discussed, and considered by the board. If any member believes that the board varied from the purpose stated for the closed meeting, please state so and the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. I think we have just a minute before we can actually...
You do.
Yep, now we're timed. So I'd like to welcome you that are here in a public meeting room. This is the Monday, September 15, 2025, meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors and those that are joining us on the live stream. We will start tonight's meeting as we always do with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your blessings upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide us and direct us in our thoughts and in our discussions, that we could do the business of the people of Louisa County that would be best for their interests and would also serve well in your eyes. Lord, we ask that you would be with those who protect us both near and far. We ask you to be with our first responders here in Louisa County and continue to keep them safe. We ask that you would provide guidance to our president. We ask you would provide guidance to our leaders in Congress and our governor and those who have authority above us. And we pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take number one on the consent agenda and move it to number three on the new business action items. I would like to add a resolution to the consent agenda proclaiming October 5 through the 11th, 2025, is National 4-H Week in Louisa County.
The second that we adopt the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion passed.
The second that we approve the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. I don't believe we have any recognitions this evening. Next is public comment.
I got no cards.
I don't have any cards. Is there anyone that would wish to address the board during public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment period. We'll move on to new business action items. The first is a resolution authorizing a path through appropriation to cut along to CDA. Ms. Colvin.
Chairman, members of the board, this resolution is for, there was an agreement with the cut along CDA that we would collect special assessments for them, and then once we collect those special assessment revenues, we would pass them through, back to them.
It's paid for their infrastructure, right?
Yeah, it's for their infrastructure.
That's just on, just on the people who the infrastructure service.
Just on the people that live in there, yes.
Yep, I know what it is, I'm just being clear for everybody.
And so when we built our budget, I did not have those numbers yet. Now I have these numbers. These are the anticipated revenues that we could potentially collect, and this resolution is to do a budget appropriation to pass their money back to them once we collect it in March of this year.
So moved.
The improperly moved in second that we approve this path through authorization, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution granting permission for General Services Department to proceed with a space study, surveying and development of an initial floor plan for the animal shelter addition. Mr. Coon.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, this is a resolution that authorizes General Services to move forward with a feasibility and space study as well as a site survey and look at the septic system and any improvements that may need to be made. We want to identify just if we can do an expansion to the existing building and the best location for this expansion, or if we need to do anything different and create a second building on site. So what this does is this lets us do all the work on the front end, and then they would be ready for a report to be presented to the board in January. That would include all their determinations and reasoning for determinations.
Excuse me. Are you okay? Get some water.
I'm right.
Excuse me. The, one of them llama beans.
Your face is turning red.
Of all the presentations you give, this is the one that chokes you up.
Yeah, I don't know. Yes, but they would be ready for a presentation to answer the board's questions in January. And what that would do is allow us to start moving forward with an RFP for construction. So we plan on, this would help us keep the timeline to be ready to start construction come that FY '27 or July 1 of 2026, as we previously mentioned.
So moved.
The improperly moved in second that we approve this resolution, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution to approve fiscal year 2027 budget calendar. Ms. Colvin.
Yes, this is our annual draft of the calendar for the process for our budget, and so we just ask for you to approve this. We can make changes as the year goes on.
Hold on, I'll second it.
A matter of consent, so I thought maybe some questions.
I'll second it. Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments about why I pulled this out of consent. We just wanted to bring to attention that through March 3 through April 3, we're going to have some town hall budget presentations. Just wanted to try to get that out a little more to the community, give them a chance to put some, some thought in, get a chance to see it a little better. So I just wanted to make sure that it didn't just get washed through the consent pretty quickly, wanted to give, make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah, and I would add, and I agree with Mr. Williams, that this is an opportunity in that month for us to take the local government to the people, and we'll make the process more accessible, more transparent, easier for people to have an input on the budget. And I would encourage, as we publish those dates, as we move that forward, I would encourage everyone to participate and make their, their thoughts and their ideas known as the board moves through the budget process for fiscal year '27. So, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Colvin. Next is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Board appointments.
I don't believe we have any board appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a sheet right here.
Do we?
Yes, sir. We're requesting to consider for the Airport Advisory Committee, appoint Mr. Lakey Harkreter, Mr. Brad Lansidel.
Lansidel, you got it figured right?
Yep. Mr. Bernie Estes, Mr. Frank Barbario, and Ms. Wanda Apperson to the Commission on Aging for the Patrick Henry District for the last one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to verify that Bill Fosdick is appointed or is being considered for appointment to the...
You have already appointed him.
We've already, we've already appointed.
This will be in addition to him.
He's already been appointed. These would be in addition. Any other comments? That was a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, improperly moved in second to make these appointments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the county administrators' report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, a few items to bring to your attention. Your monthly reports are in my report for last month. I encourage you to review those and ask me if you have any questions. A few updates on projects, I'm pleased to report to you that the skate park, skate park is slated to open at the Betty Queen Center this Saturday, so that's exciting.
That's exciting.
Finalizing signage and getting information out on that, so looking forward to the community enjoying that facility. The turf fields are progressing smoothly. We've had good weather. The retaining wall fill is, is progressing smoothly, and the architect has worked well with engineers and the construction crew on site to address a couple of challenges that have come up. We're having weak...
There a second?
Second.
I've been promptly moved in second that we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. I will now poll members to certify that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened, were discussed, and considered by the board. If any member believes that the board varied from the purpose stated for the closed meeting, please state so and the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session.
Forty-five seconds.
I think we have just a minute before we can actually...
You do.
Yep, now we're timed. So I'd like to welcome you that are here in a public meeting room. This is the Monday, September 15th, 2025, meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors and those that are joining us on the live stream. We will start tonight's meeting, as we always do, with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your blessings upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide us and direct us in our thoughts and in our discussions, that we could do the business of the people of Louisa County that would be best for their interests and would also serve well in your eyes. Lord, we ask that you would be with those who protect us both near and far. We ask you to be with our first responders here in Louisa County and continue to keep them safe. We ask that you would provide guidance to our president. We ask you would provide guidance to our leaders in Congress and our governor and those who have authority above us. And we pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take number one on the consent agenda, move it to number three on the new business action items. I would like to add a resolution to the consent agenda proclaiming October 5th through 11th, 2025, is national four-H week in Louisa County.
Second.
Second.
The second that we adopt the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes.
I'm not standing for the minute.
We're promptly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes 5-0-1 with one abstention.
Thank you.
Next is, yes, I'm sorry, 6-0-1. Next is the approval of the bills.
Second.
Improrpedly moved in second that we approve the bills. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Staying.
All right, motion passes.
6-0-1.
6-0-1. Next is approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been promptly moved in second, we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. I don't believe we have any recognitions this evening. Next is public comment.
I got no cards.
I don't have any cards. Is there anyone that would wish to address the board during public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, period. We'll move on to new business action items. The first is a resolution authorizing a pass-through appropriation to cut along to CDA. Ms. Kovan.
Chairman, members of the board, this resolution is for, there was an agreement with the cut along CDA that we would collect special assessments for them, and then once we collect those special assessment revenues, we would pass them through, back to them.
Pay for their infrastructure, right?
Yes, just for their infrastructure.
That's just on, just on the people who the infrastructure service.
The people that live in there, yes.
I know what it is, I'm just being clear for everybody.
And so when we built our budget, I did not have those numbers yet. Now I have these numbers. These are the anticipated revenues that we could potentially collect, and this resolution is to do a budget appropriation to pass their money back to them once we collect it in March of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Been promptly moved in second that we approve this pass-through authorization. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution granting permission for General Services Department to proceed with a space study, surveying, and development of an initial floor plan for the animal shelter addition. Mr. Coon.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, this is a resolution that authorizes General Services to move forward with a feasibility and space study, as well as a site survey and look at the septic system and any improvements that may need to be made. We want to identify just if we can do an expansion to the existing building and the best location for this expansion, or if we need to do anything different and create a second building on site. So what this does is this lets us do all the work on the front end, and then they would be ready for a report to be presented to the board in January. That would include all their determinations and reasoning for determinations.
Excuse me.
You okay?
Some water. You all right?
I'm right.
Excuse me. The, one of them lava beans.
Your face is turning red.
It's one of them lava beans.
Of all the presentations you give, this is the one that chokes you up.
Yeah, I don't know. Yes, but they would be ready for presentation to answer the board's questions in January, and what that would do is allow us to start moving forward with an RFP for construction. So we plan on, this would help us keep the timeline to be ready to start construction come that FY '27 or July 1 of 2026, as we previously mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
Been promptly moved in second that we approve this resolution. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution to approve fiscal year 2027 budget calendar. Ms. Kovan.
Yes, this is our annual draft of the calendar for the process for our budget, and so we just ask for you to approve this. We can make changes as the year goes on.
Hold on, I'll second it.
A matter of consent, so I thought maybe some questions.
Ms. Chairman, just a couple comments about why I pulled this out of consent. We just wanted to bring to attention that through March 3rd through April 3rd, we're going to have some town hall budget presentations. Just wanted to try to get that out a little more to the community, give them a chance to put some, some thought and get a chance to see it a little better. So just wanted to make sure that it didn't just get washed through the consent pretty quickly, wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah, and I would add, and I agree with Mr. Williams, that this is an opportunity in that month for us to take the local government to the people, and we'll make the process more accessible, more transparent, easier for people to have an input on the budget. And I would encourage, as we publish those dates, as we move that forward, I would encourage everyone to participate and make their, their thoughts and their ideas known as the board moves through the budget process for fiscal year '27. So, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kovan. Next is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Board appointments.
I don't believe we have any.
Mr. Chairman, I got a sheet right here.
Do we?
Yes, sir. We're requesting to consider for the Airport Advisory Committee appoint Mr. Lakey Harkrader, Mr. Brad Lansidel.
Lansidel, you got it. Did I get that right?
Yep. Mr. Bernie Estes, Mr. Frank Barbario, and Ms. Wanda Apperson to the Commission on Aging for Patrick Henry District for the last one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to verify that Bill Fosdick is appointed or is being considered for appointment to the...
You have already appointed him.
We've already appointed.
This will be in addition to him.
He's already been appointed. These would be in addition. Any other comments? That was a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, been promptly moved and seconded to make these appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the county administrators' report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, a few items to bring to your attention. Your monthly reports are in my report for last month. I encourage you to review those and ask me if you have any questions. A few updates on projects. I'm pleased to report to you that the skate park, skate park is slated to open at the Betty Queen Center this Saturday, so that's exciting.
That's exciting.
Finalizing signage and getting information out on that, so looking forward to the community enjoying that facility. The turf fields are progressing smoothly. We've had good weather. The retaining wall fill is, is progressing smoothly, and the architect has worked well with engineers and the construction crew on site to address a couple of challenges that have come up. We're having weekly onsite meetings there to make sure that we're on top of any issues, and I'll be, I'll have an update for you on expected final completion here very soon. Also, radio tower out at Holly Grove is nearing final completion. We are looking forward to a cut-over date to have that come online as soon as I get that from Motorola. I will, as soon as I get that date from Motorola, I will let you know, but that's progressing smoothly as well, too. We had a clear the shelter event. That's detailed in my report under General Services, and I'm pleased to report that we adopted 17 animals out of the animal shelter, which is always good. And as many of you know already, Ms. Maggie Breakville started as our land conservation and our land development and agricultural conservation coordinator has started work with us, and we're very glad to have her own staff. And just a reminder that the Fall Festival will be on the 11th of August. That concludes my remarks. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
11th of October, you mean?
Yes, I'm sorry, what did I say?
August.
August, October, yes, thank you.
Mr. Warner.
Back up to your, the Holly Grove Tower.
Yes, sir.
Did you have a date for that?
Not yet, but I will have one very soon for you.
And I know Mr. Coon has been working on that. Supposedly that tower was going to be up and running by July.
They, remember that the environmental work took a little bit longer out there than we thought it was going to, but things are moving forward again now.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, which is a resolution authorizing a budget supplement to the Shannon Hill Regional Business Park off-site utilities project and to the Louisa Tech sites off-site utilities projects. Ms. Kovan.
Yes, this resolution is requesting a budget supplement for $16,363,145 to the Louisa Tech off-site utilities project, which is part of the AWS project, all funds. This is more of a pass-through. They will be reimbursing us for all this money that would be, it's due to a rock allowance that we didn't have the exact amounts when we first did the budget appropriation, and so this is just an additional for any kind of rock allowance they may need. And of course, it'll be funded by Amazon for that. The second part is to the Shannon Hill Business Park. Same thing, when we originally budgeted, we did not have the numbers for the rock allowance, and when we put it out for bid, it came in higher. It may not be this much, but the, according to the contract, it allows for 5.3 million that could be used for a rock allowance if needed. We did sell the property, so that money would be available there if we were to need it. This is from general fund balance, but we would have the money available for that as well.
Just a question to clarify.
Sure, I didn't say that quite right.
So the 16.3 million that runs to Shan, excuse me, to Lake Anna.
Yes.
Is fully funded and paid for by AWS.
Absolutely.
No taxpayer money. And then the 5.3 million, which is what the RFPs come in, is, that money will be drawn from the delta of what we sold Shannon Hill Business Park, so no direct taxpayer money there either.
Correct. That money went into the general, to the capital fund, and this would be in the...
Exactly. I just want to get that on the record, that this is how that funding was. Okay, yes.
I believe also we have somebody that is looking so that this is a contingency fund, so that if that rock is not hit...
We don't have to pay. We don't pay.
That's correct.
They are watching that. It's being audited, to my understanding, to make sure it is needed money for that, for the Shannon Hill project, as well as the Amazon project.
I have a question. I just, it's been some concern, and I've received some calls this weekend.
Use your mic.
I've had some calls from residents in my area that are concerned because this has to do with raw water. James River was mentioned. Just want to clarify that this is not, these lines and this proposal is not taking any water from Zion's Crossroads for the James River pipeline to the data centers. That's what I'm getting calls about, that, that we're taking the water away from Zion's Crossroads and giving, these raw water lines will be from the James. And I just want to clarify that that's not the case here, that there's two separate projects.
Two separate projects, so the one project with the vast majority of that budget supplement is the Amazon site, which would not use any water. The second project is the connection of the utilities to Shannon Hill, and that is a connection to what will be James River and is currently Zion Wells today.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is, I just want to make sure that people understand that, that this connection to Shannon Hill is not, we're not changing our direction, we're not taking, we're not stalling or taking the water away from Zion's Crossroads.
You're not taking water away from...
No, that people have, it has been perceived by some residents, and I've gotten some very concerned emails, that we are diverting the water and the project from the James River to the data centers. And I just want to make that clear, that we are not doing that, that, that we are still on track to supply James River water to Zion's Crossroads and the Business District.
Yes. Yeah, I just want to make sure, I'm going to state this differently, and I just want to make sure I've stated clearly.
Yes.
It is one shared system that connects along 250.
Correct.
It is currently fed by the Zion Crossroads wells. It will be fed by James River water, and to the extent that the Water Authority wishes it to remain so, the wells may remain in, in partial production to supplement what comes from the James River on that single system that would serve both sites and potentially in other areas along 250 like Front Cliff.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
If I'm understanding, if I'm understanding this correctly, the water is, from the James River is not going to just Zion's Crossroads, it is also going to this business park.
Yes.
There was some confusion on residents' parts that we were actually redirecting the water away from Zion's Crossroads and sending the James River water to...
No.
Shannon Hill. And so that's why I just wanted to get on record that that's not the case. I know it's not the case. I've been fielding a lot of calls and concerns, and I did a post about it, that that is not the case.
Right, it's going to both places.
Right.
Could go to potentially other places.
Yeah, it could, but we are still giving...
Thank you, Ms. Kovan.
Yeah.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would wish to address the board on this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Been promptly moved and seconded that we approve this resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Mr. Barnes?
So moved.
Second.
Been promptly moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, meeting adjourned.